Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody here, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 27th, 2023 regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. Okay, good, there you go. I would like to wish everybody happy fall. It's my favorite time of year. And as customary, we hold a moment of silence for each board meeting, and so we ask you to join the board for a moment of silence, maybe take a couple of deep breaths, and prepare for the evening of business ahead. Now, let us please join us with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we get comfortable here, Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, one change, Mr. Chairman. Item 12B2 is being removed at the request of the solicitor.
That brings us to the Newtown-Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority presentation for this evening. Walter Warren Gormley is here, along with an entourage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to start with the introductions. To my left is Ed Wieden, Gannon Fleming, he's the Authority Engineer, followed by Mike Midito, recently our manager for the Newtown Sewer Authority, and Terry Funk, also with Gannon Fleming, our engineer. We're here tonight to do an introduction for a potential wastewater treatment plant. As you may or may not have heard, the Authority is looking into this, doing their due diligence on our part to look through all of the, and investigate all of, you know, for the ratepayers of Newtown Township and Borough, and also to, I guess, see the potential in the future, whether it be 10, 20, or 30 years from now. With that, Ed, I can have Ed do his part of what he has been investigating on this. Ed, if you would.
Thank you, Warren. Good evening. It's good to see everybody. As Warren had intro, you know, the Authority is doing the due diligence of looking at the options that we may have. If some of you may recall, back in 2013, the Authority did the same thing because of the increasing costs of the county system. The Authority looked at it, and that didn't go anywhere back in 2013 because of some issues. The site was different. We were looking at putting the plant at the original site where the Authority had their plant back in the, you know, 60s through the 80s. It was a very small site. It was bordered by residential areas, and, you know, rightly, residents had some concerns. This board had concerns, or your predecessors had some concerns, and so the option wasn't furthered back in 2013. We took that information from 2013, learned some lessons. We learned to take into consideration of the surrounding area. There's the opportunity the Authority may have for a larger parcel of ground this time. So it allows us to look at different processes. One of the processes that we looked at back in 2013 was necessary because of the small site size. So the potential site now is larger, offers us more opportunities. The drivers, Warren touched on them, you know, our drivers are looking at what happened last year with the potential sale of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, and the rates that may have been generated to all the residents of the township and the Borough because of that. The, you know, the costs of what Bucks County has for running their system, their regional system. That interceptor system is aging. There's some capital that they're, you know, having to invest in keeping that system going. I think all of you who are residents saw that 16.6% increase that came from the county authority. So that's a concern for the Authority. The Authority is very concerned with the residents and the cost to them. And also, you know, the city of Philadelphia, where all the waste is treated, and the chaminier interceptor drains down into the city and the Northeast Water Pollution Control Plant. And, you know, the city of Philadelphia is strapped with the costs that they have from the EPA and their long-term control plan, which adds a lot of unknowns to the future. And also, who knows, you know, I've lived through what happened at Chesapeake Bay and up the Susquehanna River with the requirements that were put on treatment plants to enhance the removals and the costs associated with that. Someday, that comes to the Delaware. I believe that. I won't see it, but I think in, you know, in the foreseeable future, you're going to see additional nutrient requirement removalments on discharges on any of the basin that drains the Delaware River. So those future costs are going to be there. One of the options would be for the Newtown-Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority to do their own facility and control their own costs and not be subject to some of these outside costs. So that's where I think the Authority is right now. No decisions have been made, no commitments have been made, you know, other than in the investigation. The Authority has engaged council to look at the agreement that they have with the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, so that one of the requirements would have to be to get out of that agreement. And the Authority has expended considerable monies in looking at that because it's an important leg of this, you know. The other thing is dealing with the DEP. And we've had a few meetings. The township was party to one of those meetings when we talked about the Act 537 process, which is the Sewer Facilities Planning Act in Pennsylvania. So if this plant were to go forward, it would require amendment to the township's 537 plan and the Borough's 537 plan. So we've talked then. We also got preliminary effluent limits for a potential discharge into the Core Creek. That's a concern we have because it's above Lake Luxembourg, and, you know, it's very low discharge limit. So we've just as recently as yesterday, was it? Was it yesterday or the day before? We had a meeting with the DEP to discuss those issues and potentially look at some alternatives. So that's being investigated. And certainly, the last and not the least important is, you know, discussing this with you all in the Borough Council. Warren attended a Borough Council meeting some time ago and gave this introduction. So that's why we're here tonight, to give that intro to it and to, you know, field any of your questions, you know, just double-check my notes. I think I touched on everything that we had kind of jotted down, so.
Yeah, sure.
And helpful to see.
I brought the map along just to give you an idea. This is the entire sanitary sewer drainage system of Newtown Township and Newtown Borough.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody knows, but there's over 100 miles of sanitary sewer that are in the township and in the Borough. The, yeah, five pump stations, you know, obviously, no treatment plant any longer. The Authority's plant was built in the 60s and the commission in the 80s. So everything now flows into the county system, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority system, and down to the city of Philadelphia. And at one time, no, no, no one here is old enough, but at one time, the Borough had the larger system. When the Goldmakers, showing my age, because I remember when it was Goldmakers, when that development was built, the 751 with Newtown Grant now, as everyone knows it, you know, the Goldmakers trunk line went up from the Borough all the way up through what is now Newtown Grant and changed sort of the balance of where the sewers were from Borough to Township. So the Authority, you know, under Warren's 35, 40 years, excuse me, 40 years of experience there, has maintained the system. It's one of the better systems, you know. I think that the Township and the Borough should be very proud of what the Authority has done over these years. I've been involved since 81, and I've seen the system grow, and I've seen the way that it's been taken care of, and it's a rarity in southeastern PA. I can tell you that, the condition of the Township and the Borough system, so.
Yeah, yes, just for the past 60 years, the Authority has been operating and maintaining the system. We have four personnel, outside personnel, and four people in the office. We do have, we did purchase a new TV truck with a lateral launch camera. We also purchased a new Vector truck. As we move on and look for things throughout the system, in our budgets for years, I had put in the Township Borough and the Borough road plan, and then that road plan would be to replace the framing covers in all of the developments as they come up. So for the last 35 years, all them manhole, old framing covers have been replaced, which had pickholes in them, which would drain water in. So the Authority has been very proactive, passboard and present as to our system. So with that being said, the way the system is and the, I'm going to say the tightness of it, Ed and I did a presentation years ago in the Poconos where we had added 2,200 customers on the system, and we did not increase the flow. So just to let you know, the work that's been done throughout the years on the system and continues to be done as well.
And if I could, I would just add, you know, one of the last points I just saw in my notes, and I want to make sure everyone was very clear on, you know, the Authority is now reviewing a lot of information that's been gathered by both the council that's been reviewing the agreement and the engineering work that my office has done, and they're doing their due diligence in reviewing that. You know, some of this has been executive session discussions, as I'm sure, you know, this board is very aware about, you know, our limited ability to discuss those discussions. But no decisions have been made, you know, no decisions will be made until a public meeting is, you know, arranged and all this is discussed. So that, I guess, is kind of where we are, so be happy to answer any questions.
I have two questions. How will that, how will we get word of that public meeting and where would it probably take place? Or maybe a series of public meetings?
I believe it would be a series of public meetings, Mr. Chairman. The Authority would announce that to the Township and the Borough when that would take place. I believe we would try to hold that down at the Sewer Authority in our conference room. If that's not big enough, we'll make arrangements for, you know, something bigger.
Great. And have you looked at any projections on rate, rates down the road?
Ed's doing the rate projection.
Yeah, obviously, that's part of the analysis that we provided to the Authority to look at, you know. So it's driven, obviously, by the capital cost of the project and the soft costs that go along with that, land acquisition, you know, any legal fees, any engineering fees. So depending on the effluent criteria issued by the DEP, depending on where we end up discharging, you know, right now, we're looking at a discharge to the Core Creek, you know, that drives the cost. So we're refining those costs right now for the Authority, and I guess to give you a, Mr. Chairman, you know, a short answer, yes, we've looked at it and, you know, we'll be prepared to kind of present that also. You know, sometimes, like if you recall the presentation done back in, I shouldn't say you recall, again, you're all too young, you may not remember the 2013 thing. At 2013, we showed where the, it did cost more upfront, but when you looked at projections, looking the history of rates and what the Authority could do with their own system, there was a eventual crossing of those lines, right, where it was initially a little bit more expensive, but in the long run, it worked out for the ratepayers. So those are the same kind of analysis we're doing now, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for coming in here. As you know, I listened to your presentation before the Borough Council, which was much more informative, I must say. So I have some questions based on what I know, what I learned from your presentation at the Borough Council. Number one, you're looking at land in the OR District, 17.5 acres or so, a few hundred yards from where the Wawa is going to be on, was it Upper Silver Lake Road, Lower Silver Lake Road? I forget which, Lower Silver Lake?
Lower Silver Lake.
That piece of land is privately owned, is it not?
Yes.
And that is where the developer, KRE, has applied to build 245 units. What do you have to do to get that land?
We're, oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, please, Warren.
We're working on that as far as we, we had an appraisal done on the land, and we are waiting for the rest of our information to come in so we can compile everything to go forward and possibly purchase that land.
Have you approached the?
No, we have not.
Okay. And you said you were looking for a larger parcel of land this time. I know 17.5 acres is a lot. There's some water on there, on that watershed or whatever it is, and I know it's zoned, allowing utilities such as a sewer plant, a sewer treatment plant. But from what I've read of the ordinance, buildings and whatever's constructed on there has to be under 10% of the land used. Are you aware of that ordinance?
No, we are not.
So is 10% of 17.5 something that would work with what you're planning to do?
Yes. The old treatment facility was only nine acres, and what happens is, depending on the treatment that we decide to use, that footprint could be even bigger, could be needed bigger than the nine acres.
Well, 10% of 17.5 is less than two acres.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Mack, you know, again, at the level of detail that we are right now, we haven't looked at that exactly, you know. We would certainly be in contact with the Township, read your code, and talk to your engineer. I don't know without reading the code, the definition of building, you know, is a treatment tank a building as opposed to just?
Well, I may not have quoted it exactly, but.
And in fairness to both of us, I haven't read it myself, so.
Well, I guess I suggest that you read that.
Well, there's also variances that can be requested and things like that. And again, I don't know the definition of the word "building," right, in your.
Well, I may not have used the right word, building or facility or whatever improvement is made perhaps. You've got to look at that, is what I'm getting at, except. So, but if you do need more than the 10%, you're going to have to get some kind of variance in the zoning, I believe.
If, again, I haven't read the ordinance, and I don't know what the exact determination is, but.
Well, that's just general practice when you're not, you know, able to comply with the zoning regulations, you're going to have to get, decrease some kind of hardship and get some kind of variance, and that's from the zoning hearing board.
Right. I do municipal engineering work, yes, very familiar with it. Thank you.
The Board of Supervisors is a party to that. What is the role of the Board of Supervisors? I'm just looking forward to how do we work with you on this project, or do we approve this project or not?
Do you approve this project? I would say that there will be a land development associated with the project, Mr. Mack, so it certainly would come before the board for your, you know, the engineer's review, the solicitor's review, you know, the board's review, yes.
Okay, but that's some time away. You're still doing a lot of.
Sure.
Work on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think those are all the questions that I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. You said right now you're doing due diligence, and you're not sure where you are in the process. Do you have a ballpark when you're looking at moving forward, next steps, and start looking at acquiring the land and whatnot? What's your schedule looking like loosely?
Well, and I can start that, and Warren can fill in some of the holes, Mr. Davis. You know, the Authority has, as I mentioned earlier, has retained outside counsel and has looked at the legal agreements, and that's been going on for some time now. They've engaged myself, Terry and I, from Gannon Fleming, to look at the costs associated with doing this project. We haven't done any design work yet, so they're all preliminary sort of tabletop, our experience kind of costs. And what the Authority has now is some information from us that they're reviewing, some of those cost information. They have an opinion letter from outside counsel that they're reviewing. Warren mentioned there was an appraisal done on the property. There was, I think.
He also met with the bank.
Right.
For the money for the property.
So, yes, some funding.
And secured that.
Right. Funding discussions have been ongoing. So what we anticipate is, you know, before the end of the year, and I'm not speaking for the Authority here, I'm speaking for what my work is to give the Authority information, is prior to the end of the year, we will have more detailed information for them to make a value decision, to come and see whether it is in the best interest of the ratepayers. My experience with Newtown Authority in the years I've been involved is that's what they decide, right? If it makes sense for the ratepayers of the townships and the township and Borough, then it'll go forward.
Regarding the appraisal, is that something you could share with this board right now?
You know, our solicitor, unfortunately, tonight has COVID, so he couldn't make it. I'm not in a position, I'm not going to make any legal opinions. I don't know whether we can or we can't, Mr. Davis, so I'll keep my.
If there's no issue, we can share, but, yeah.
I'm sorry.
If there, I'll talk to the solicitor, too. If there's no issue, then, yeah, gladly.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Clabro?
Yes, I have a few questions. Fortunately or unfortunately, I was one of the ones back in 2013 that was here.
Okay.
And I remembered that time. I thought it was a good idea because it would make Newtown area self-sufficient as far as that was concerned. The only problem with that, at that location, as you knows, because of the residential area around, and I remember another issue that was always brought up that was anyone that drives into New Jersey is familiar with the Borden Town Sewage Plant. And the reason they're familiar with it is because you could smell the plant from a mile away. And I remember at that particular time, there were some new innovations of how things were, I guess, recycled through the plant, and going back 10 years ago till now, have things like that improved that I'm sure the people of the township wouldn't want to have that smell throughout the township?
You're right, Mr. Clabro. You're remembering it very well. You were a young, very young man back then when we had this conversation.
I just started to vote at that time.
Right. And, but the, we were looking at a process because it called an membrane bioreactor, is that, you may remember that term, or MBR, because of the small site and it has the ability to be enclosed completely, right? And any wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, I've been involved in many of them over the years of my career, you know, odors are a concern, obviously, right? Visual issues are a concern, you know? Nobody likes, you know, it's kind of the out of sight, out of mind is a good thing, and so nobody likes to see it. We've, we heard some of those issues from 2015, learned from those discussions in 2013, right? And we want to keep that, so looking at screening it, looking at enclosing it as much as we can. To your answer about technology, basic wastewater technology, treatment technology hasn't changed much in the last 40, 50 years, but there have been add-ons, you know, there's much more involved or much more technology out there for odor control, right? You can enclose vessels now. You can put scrubbers on them. You can do a lot of different things. You know, the MBR process that I mentioned was one of the reasons the costs were so high, and that's why we're looking at whether there are other processes that still wouldn't meet the requirements, and those requirements are the things you mentioned, not only meeting what the DEP puts on us, but the requirements of the community, smells, sites, truck traffic, those kind of things, right? So all that is being weighed.
Great. I guess another thing, I know the Sewer Authority from going to meetings and being involved with what you guys do, that I have to say, you're probably the most efficient sewer authority in the county, and I know Warren, it has a lot to do with that. In regards to surrounding areas, naturally, the more customers you would absorb, the better it would be cost-wise as far as. Have you speculated capturing Lower Makefield, say, for, because I know then they get hit with that, is it called Aqua? Is that the name of the company? And I know now they're probably not happy that they went with Aqua. But I mean, are there possibilities of capturing surrounding areas, Lower Makefield, and maybe also North Hampton, which has also sold their sewer authority? And that would give you more customers, lowering costs and so on? Is that a possibility?
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Clabro. You know, Act 537 that I mentioned earlier, the Sewer Facilities Planning Act, that belongs to you, right? That's the township's decision. The township decides, you know, what or if you're going to service, you know, and certainly the Authority is here to support the wishes of the township. You use the word speculate, and I wouldn't be doing my job for the Authority if I didn't bring up those questions. As a matter of fact, in our meeting with the DEP a day or two ago, brought that up to the fact that would the DEP say to us, hey, we have some issues in Lower Makefield or some issues in one of the other communities nearby? Or we want you to take the Core Creek interceptor and take the flows that come down that and take it to your plant? We haven't closed any of those doors. Right now, I will tell you that the evaluation has been only to treat sewage from Newtown Township and Newtown Borough and not look outside the Borough in any way, shape, or form, right? Whether that was domestic wastewater, you know, cooking up from those communities, or hauled-in waste or something like that. So none of that has been investigated, you know, and, but those are discussions that certainly can become part of this if it matures, right? If we get past this due diligence phase and it becomes a reality that makes sense for everybody, makes sense for the Township, it makes sense for the Borough, and so certainly we can look at those things. But it's a speculation only.
Sure, sure.
And the thing about when a private, when a private utility acquires a public system, like whether it would be Aqua or Pierre American or one or the other Bucks County Water and Sewer owns some other, you know, systems outside of Bucks County, they now control that. So we couldn't go, like if Lower Makefield already took their system and sold it to a private utility, nothing we can do about it really, right? So, and that would all, and whether Lower Makefield could break that agreement with somebody, that certainly I would leave to smarter lawyers than me.
Gotcha. Is Quaker Town a self-sufficient sewer plant? Do they have one there? For some reason, that.
Bucks owns Quaker Town as well, yes.
Okay. Because I thought that the Borough owned the sewer plant in Quaker Town, that's not.
Maybe the Borough, I'm not sure, but I know the Township, I think Quaker Town, I know Bucks owns part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I just heard you just talk about it, and that because they own their own sewage plant, that it's much more beneficial to the residents in regards to cost and things like that because of the self-sufficiency.
Correct.
So, you know, understandably, it may take time because I'm assuming you have to pay off some debt actually go along. And after that, maybe reassessment on your return on investment will make the cost go down instead of continuing to go up, so.
Right. You know, you bring up a very good point, Mr. Clabro, that, you know, obviously, these systems, whether it's a township or Authority-owned system locally, or whether it's a regional system like the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, there's debt associated with it, right? So, and the systems get old, and so there's a continuing cost to maintaining them. You know, the job that Warren and Mike and the staff have done for years about keeping your system here in the Township and Borough in such great condition, it makes it easier to have a plant, right? You don't see wide fluctuations in flows when you have a control on your I and I in flow and infiltration. And, you know, not every community has invested that kind of money. So, you know, that long-term cost, and Bucks has a long-term cost, and it's not their fault, you know, they have aging infrastructure. That's part of what, you know, you're going to pay for. So is it make sense for you to have the debt, the Authority to have the debt and the control over that long-term, or whether it's still better to be part of a regional system? I will tell you, the analysis in 85, 86 was it was better to go regional when you looked at the facts in 85 and 86. at the facts in 85 and 86. May not be the case today.
Okay. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro. Ms. Snyder, last but not certainly not least.
Thank you. I, I sit on the board of the Sewer Authority, so I listen to everything that's being said very carefully, and they are going through a painstaking process that I believe they're not missing many details, and it's being done the right way. And I'm optimistic about the way it seems to be going. I'm certainly in favor of it, and I think it's a great idea, and hopefully, they're going to bring it to fruition, and we're all going to benefit in many ways from it. And ratepaying is just one of those ways. But, yes, just my thoughts. I don't have questions, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate your due diligence in everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have another question.
Direct.
Memory serves, and I don't know when this was, it was within the last couple of years, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, I think, took a loan out for improvements. Are we not still on the hook for that? Those improvements that we're, they're already working on?
Yes. The Bucks has, I believe it's in three phases. We had one increase so far, there will be two more coming. They plan to spend, I think, 200 million on the system in upgrades that are needed. What happened, I guess, when the Aqua purchase was thought about, all of the, I guess, all of the parts of the system that needed to be repaired came out. Aqua had put a number to that, and that's what them escalated rates were by like 57%. So, when that fell apart, Bucks now knows that under the DEP regs too, they have to fix all of this infrastructure, and I believe the interceptor, 60 years, I guess it's been? The Nishamani Interceptor, it's been almost 60 years. So, and that runs, it starts up at Spring Garden Mill, Hill, right there, where Newtown ties into Crossing, comes in there and flows all the way down to Totem Road Pump Station into the Pecesting Interceptor and then down to Philadelphia. So, in essence, Newtown, we are collection. Bucks County with the Nishamani Interceptor is conveyance, and Philly is treatment. So, that's how it works.
So, I think, let me clarify my question. We're still on the hook for those improvements, right? Even if we go our own way?
Well, that, that's part of the legal side that's being investigated, Mr. Davis. And just, just so you know, you know, the authority's original agreement with Bucks County was 1975, and there was bonds associated tied to that. Through experience in, in, over the number of years, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority has issued bonds maybe every two, three, four years, right? So, there's a, there's a whole series of bond issuances, some of them refundings, you know, which is a smart thing to get better rates, some of them to do improvements or, or, you know, capital projects mandated by DEP or for whatever reason. So, there are many bond issues, and that's part of the reason that, that outside council was engaged to, to see what the authority's liability is regarding those outstanding indebtedness.
Great. So, you hired outside council just for this project? Is that what you're...
That is correct. Well, I did not.
No, you're, sorry, I was mispronouncing. I apologize. Who's the outside council? Just curious.
Paul Logan.
Paul Logan, okay. All right, thank you. I'm, I'm good, thanks. No further questions.
All right. Seeing no further questions, I'd like to thank you gentlemen for your presentation, and hope to learn more about this in the upcoming weeks and months.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll let them. Okay. That brings us to our first session of public comment, first round of public comment. Do we have anybody who would like to give public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing none. We'll go to the next agenda item, which is minor approvals, and that would be the Historic Architectural Review Board, otherwise known as HARB. And I see Mr. Maher coming up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Bill Mahler, Chair of the Historic Architectural Review Board for Newtown Township. At our September 13th meeting this year, we had two applications for review. The first was at 9 South Sycamore Street, where Relief Acupuncture is housed. You can come up, the applicant's here. It is for an outside stairwell from an existing second-story deck, and the board, nobody had any objections and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project. And this is the business owner.
Hi, how are you?
You can introduce yourself.
Good evening.
I'm Faith Meltzer. I'm the owner of Relief Acupuncture. I've been in the community for a long time. I just moved across the street. I was at George Stockburger's place across the street for a long time. We just want to add some access to the second floor of the building, that's it, from the outside.
You just answered my question. My assumption was it was giving access to the second floor.
That's all it is.
So, you didn't have to walk down through the house?
Yes. We have a handicap ramp, it's right behind, it's hidden, no one will really see it from the street.
Okay.
That's it.
Anybody have any questions? I guess maybe we should form a motion. Is there anything more that we need to add?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to grant a certificate of appropriateness for 9 Sycamore, South Sycamore Street.
Mr. Chairman, conditioned on compliance with the HARB memo dated September 13th, 2023.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A motion in a second. Do you have any discussion from the board? Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
The other application that we reviewed was at 7, South Sycamore, right next door. The applicant wanted to replace gravel parking area with pavers, install a outside light fixture by the front door, and extend an existing fence. And again, the board, nobody had any concerns about this project and voted unanimously to recommend approval. This is the applicant, Deborah Gannon.
It was two light fixtures.
Two light fixtures.
And you had some railing and some, no, it was a fence.
It's pavers. It's pavers and extension of existing fence.
Yeah, the gravel's awful messy now with the historic, I mean, with the Sycamore Street being, having a lot of heavy traffic now. I mean, I've been there for 20 something years. The gravel's just all over the sidewalk, and I always have to sweep it, it's just, I need to just clean it up.
Very good. If, if HARB says it's okay, it's usually okay with me, almost always, so.
Thank you.
Should we frame a motion? Someone like to make a motion to approve a certificate of appropriateness for 7 South Sycamore Street, contingent upon the letter from HARB?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion to grant a certificate of appropriateness for 7 South Sycamore Street, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And then, I just wanted to also mention that during the meeting, the members that were present also had a lengthy discussion about the recent application for the multi-story apartments behind the 711 property. That is in the historic district, so, you know, I expect that, you know, we'll have to deal with that as it comes forward. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, that brings us to reports of boards, committees, and commissions. Planning Commission. Sorry, I rushed it a little bit.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Township Planning Commission, here to give you a synopsis of our September 19th meeting. First item on our agenda was conditional use for life after 40. The commission reviewed this application for conditional use approval for a C6 athletic facility in the PC Plan Commercial Zoning District at the former GNC store in the village at Newtown. The facility offers fitness training using technology. The commission voted to recommend that the board grant conditional use approval, subject to compliance with the CKS letter dated September 11th, 2023, with hours of operation to be 5:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM, seven days a week. Next, we had zoning hearing board applications, the first being Harriet Beckett at 473 Lower Dullington Road. The applicant is seeking variances for maximum gross density, front yard setback, building envelope regulations, and disturbance of ag soils in order to subdivide a 10.4 acre parcel into four building lots. The historic farmhouse and the view shed are preserved. The applicant worked extensively with the planning commission to develop this plan. This parcel is in the CM Conservative Management Zoning District, but is surrounded on three sides by R1 medium-density housing. The plan is consistent with the surrounding developments. The commission voted to recommend that the board support this application. This was not a unanimous vote, as one member felt that the CM zoning regulation should be upheld. Next, we had Timothy and Shari Farley at 28 Barclay Street. The applicants are seeking a variance for impervious surface of 23.3%, where the permitted impervious is 13, and the existing condition is 22.1, in order to build a shed. The existing shed is to be removed, and it should be noted that the swimming pool on the plan is an inflatable pool that's not permanent and is removed most of the year. The commission voted unanimously that they recommend that the board take no position on this application. Next, we had Chuck Chappick and Angela Flannery at 4 Atkinson Lane. The applicants are seeking a variance for increased impervious surface of 4,334 square feet, or 4,000 square feet is the maximum, in order to remove a damaged wooden deck and replace it with a paper patio. The applicant intends to plant trees to offset the increased runoff from the increased impervious surface. The commission voted unanimously to recommend that the board take no position on this application. Lastly, we had the Borsch Belt at 2124 South Eagle Road. The applicant is appealing the actions of the zoning officer, who issued a violation for a large neon sign in the window at the Village of Newtown South. The applicant was not in attendance. We understand that the applicant had asked to postpone his zoning hearing board appointment for one month. The members did discuss the neon sign, the inconsistent enforcement of signage in our commercial districts, and in this particular case, the outdated zoning ordinance. For many years, the planning commission has discussed our signage ordinances, and we are in agreement that it might be necessary to review the signed ordinance for all zoning districts. Perhaps it's a jointure, which is currently looking into amending the billboard ordinance. And that was all we had. Any questions? I'll try to answer.
Any questions for the planning commission report?
Yeah, I have, I have a few questions.
Okay.
One in regards to the, I guess, the inflatable pool. Is there, is anyone going to inspect that the inflatable pool will be taken down at certain points of the year?
I guess we can ask them to do that, but they did, it's something that they inflate with the, with the tank, and they said they take it down. We're trusting they're telling us the truth, that they do remove it.
Boy Scouts honor, I guess.
I hope.
Now, in regards to the neon sign, I, I, I don't know, I was on the board when we had numerous sign ordinance meetings. Did we include neon signs in that ordinance?
No.
No? Okay. I guess that's something we have to address. I, I thought we did, but I stand corrected. I guess that's all they have. Simple, less questions than I thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll come up under, so listen.
Sorry.
Okay, that brings us to EAC. You have a presentation from the EAC. Is Mr. Haber there, here? And hopefully, you can give us a synopsis of what the EAC is doing about solar.
I'm going to. This is, okay. Mark Haber, I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for the township. I understand that Ellen has told you that the EAC's two highest priorities for the township are, one, passing a single-use plastics ordinance, which I understand you're working on, so we won't talk about that, and, second, installing a solar array to power the township facilities and equipment. And this evening, I'm just briefly going to touch on how solar will benefit the township and discuss a few installations. You all have copies of the longer presentation. Is there somebody who can't refer to it? I have some extra. I just want to refer to a few illustrations in it. Does anybody need, you're all set?
We, we do have it.
Okay, good.
It's in our packet this evening.
Let me find my copy of what you have. Okay, so, on the third page of the report, there's a list of reasons why the township should consider solar power. I don't want to read those or repeat them, but basically, what all those reasons mean is that it makes good economic sense for the township to do this. Lower and predictable energy costs, which is good for the township budget, cash available to do the project, which is an opportunity right now not to be missed because of the IRA, grid resilience, I think voters will like that, and what we owe the future. So, we're not pioneers in this, which is why I wanted to refer to the illustrations. So, we have some, let me just find my copy of what you have here. Got it. Okay, so, first illustration, Tyler State Park, which you may have seen, it's at the entrance to the park. That array powers the buildings, the office building and the maintenance building, powers lights in the park, powers all the small residences in the park, water and sewage pumping, was paid for with tax revenue and bonds. Second, West Rock Hill to the north of us, they use their array, let me just find that here, right, to power the municipal buildings. And also, you'll see on the next page, they're also powering the Public Works Building, the ball fields, lights, and pumps for sewage and water. They paid for it with cash, and the system is paying back faster than they projected. They, I won't go into the details of that. Next, next one is Ferguson Township. This is a roof mount on a municipal building. This was paid for with a commercial power purchase agreement. And finally, Friends School, Maluka Hill, which has a ground and roof mount system, paid for with a private power purchase agreement. So, the main thrust of this is that solar for, solar is an opportunity for the township to invest instead of just spend on things. And unless I've already convinced you, all of you to proceed, we, the EAC requests time to make the complete presentation at some time in the future and for you to give this serious consideration. Thank you. Other questions?
Why didn't you put your Chambersburg on here?
Why didn't I?
Put Chambersburg in Franklin County, that's where I'm from.
Oh, there is, there are probably 13 of those. I wanted to keep it. Ellen said I had just a few minutes, and here we are. I could have gone on, yes.
I was just joking, but thank you, yeah. It was good to see that they're, they're forward-thinking.
And we do look forward to a full presentation, and we will make time for that in the future, not long into the future.
Terrific. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. All right. I think that brings us to board member reports. I have three things I'd like to mention. One, we'll probably get into a little bit later in the agenda this evening, is the award of a grant for $1,556,000, if I'm... award of a grant for $1,556,000, if I'm correct, or somewhat correct, for the SAFER grant. And I see Chief Forsyth is here, and we'll probably talk a little bit more about that in his report. Second item that I had was, we've had correspondence with neighbors of Newtown Walk regarding the design, the progress of design for the rapid rectangular flashing beacons. Do I have the, right? Okay. RFPs. So, that's been ongoing, and the design, there is, design is complete that we are reviewing, and we'll soon, hopefully soon, send it to PennDOT. The, and the third item I had was, I just want to make a plea, I know this is a hot topic in my neighborhood, for drivers to be aware, school is back in session, there's a lot of young people running across intersections to get home or to get to school. I doubt if they're running to get to school. But, yeah, please slow down. When you come to an intersection that has a stop sign, please stop. Someone almost got hit because the car didn't stop. And never, never pass a bus when it stopped. I had one other, one other item that came through while they were finishing up the Sioux Authority presentation. We did get an email on our system, and let me get back to it here. Right? I can almost tell you what it said there. Here we go. This is from, and I guess this is appropriate for me to, to read at this point, and we can decide if, how we can answer the questions since all the folks from Sioux Authority are gone. But we did get an email from Jack Brode, he's the township resident in Crown Point. He asked two questions. "Are you intending to purchase the land," and this would be for the Sioux Authority, "are you intending to purchase the land before you complete due diligence and receive final approvals?" That's number one. And number two question is, "If so, what happens with the land if the project doesn't move forward?" I suppose maybe the appropriate thing to do would be to pass those on to the Sioux Authority, and we can do that. It, it came to the special account, and Catherine forwarded it to me. But, yeah, we can, somebody sent that to the rest of the board, too. Yep. Because it went to the special account, and then Catherine sent it. No, but I will. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
I have my own report.
Okay. Madam Secretary-Treasurer?
I don't have much report either. I did attend the last planning commission meeting, where Ms. Driscoll discussed everything that she reported on, and that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Claber, since we're looking that direction?
There are nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec report for this evening. Pre-registered today for the following upcoming camps. Understanding the Basics of Wills. I bet you children would love that one. Content Creation 101, Creative Theater, Super-Scientists, and Acrylic Pouring. Also, there's an e-recycling event held Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Public Works Building. Rain or shine, more info can be found at the Park and Rec Facebook page. Also, there's a Holiday Craft Fair, and it's going to be Saturday, November 18th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Newtown Township Admin Building. Vendors are still needed. Reach out to the Park and Rec office for more info. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. That brings us to reports of officials, and we're starting with the engineer report this evening. And with us tonight, we have Dominic Candari.
Correct. Happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item we have tonight is for the Flores subdivision financial security release, number one. Based on our inspection of the work completed, RVE recommends that the township release the amount of $115,417.50, excuse me, to the developer from the financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the development. After this release, the total amount of financial security remaining is $200,413.68.
We have a motion, wave a second.
Second.
Okay. Whichever one. Okay. Mr. Davis has it. Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call, any from the board, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the security release number one for the Flores subdivision on Lynton Hill Road, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question from the engineer?
Sure.
I'm interested in the Lower Doolington Road, not Lower Doolington, yes, Lower Doolington Road Trail project. The contract they had, according to your punch list, until September 8th, to make the 33 changes that you wanted fixed, and they haven't met that. Can you give us an update on what's going to be going on with that?
Sure. We spoke to them on Friday of last week to coordinate the remaining punch list items to be completed. There was some issues with their payment that they were requesting. We didn't agree to some of the items, so there was some back and forth, but as of Friday, they had said that they will be out there to complete this punch list soon, and we've requested a schedule. I haven't seen it come through yet, but we can, we can keep on top of them to get us the schedules that we can, we can share with everyone.
Well, as I can see, that, I don't think they did anything, right? They haven't done anything, any item on the punch list. Have they?
No, I think the majority of them have been completed. There's just a few remaining. I know there was some work to be done with the guide rail. There were some stop signs that had to be relocated. There was some concrete that needed repair, and you have to remove and replace some concrete sidewalk where water is ponding, and then provide asphaltrons and a maintenance bond. But the rest of the 33 items were completed, it looks like on either August 14th, 15th, or 16th.
Okay. I didn't realize that they were there. Very good. You also said in the final punch list that you reserve the right to review the project site once they do complete all the items. Is that something you still plan to do?
Absolutely, yeah.
And you said you might invite representatives of the township to that review. Is that possible?
Sure, yeah. I'm, to my understanding, that the public was involved with putting together this punch list, so, you know, if they want to...
Well, I don't know about the public. I don't want to make it too complicated, but...
Some of the residents, right.
We do represent the residents, the board supervisors, so maybe a couple of board members could be on that review.
Sure.
Because I'm especially interested in that concrete, the ADA ramp where water is ponding, that could be a hazard in the wintertime, so...
Absolutely.
I'd like to see how they handle that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be certain to...
Okay. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Candari. Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Sander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report this evening is a board consideration to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance that adopts the 2018 version of the International Fire Code with amendments promulgated by the fire company and Chief Forsyth as the fire code of the township. If the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to authorize advertisement of that ordinance for the board's next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, wave a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. And this is indeed the advertising of this ordinance, which we will vote on at probably the next meeting. Okay, just making that clear. Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Going once, going twice? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing to advertise a consideration to adopt the ordinance of the 2018 International Fire Code, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on our list is item B3 on the agenda. It's consider adoption of an amendment to the jointure agreement to eliminate the Joint Planning Commission. The existing intergovernmental agreement between the township and Upper Makefield and Wrightstown townships still has reference to a body that used to exist and used to actually meet called the Joint Planning Commission, but a number of years back, the participating municipalities decided that they would rather have their own local planning commissions review all of the applications in each township, and that the Joint Planning Commission was somewhat superfluous. The issue was, it was still on the books. So, the jointure, the Joint Zoning Council recently revisited the agreement. We came up with addendum number nine to that agreement, and it eliminates reference to the Joint Planning Commission. It also provides that each municipality, each township, no matter how many of its own members attend a joint zoning council meeting, only has one vote toward whether to take action or not on behalf of the jointure. So, it also makes that change and restates the agreement with those changes. So, if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-R-15, approving addendum number nine to the jointure agreement.
I'll make the motion.
And the motion, we have a second, motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I just want, oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
No, I just wanted to add some, Mr. Solicitor, even though the elimination of the planning, Joint Planning Commission, every township usually has someone from their planning commission attend these meetings, of which they could give input.
Certainly.
So, even though it's not an official planning commission, planning commissions of those township are still represented.
That's correct, Mr. Claber.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question on the voting, which I thought might get a little complicated at these meetings. I mean, sometimes there are three representatives, and I know the board would make a decision that would probably carry through to the Joint Zoning Commission Council, but there are some things... Can you, can you read that over again? Because there are some decisions that are made right at that meeting, and you have three board members present. Do you, it requires a majority vote, or how does that seem to work? I'm not quite clear on that.
This is paragraph eight of the addendum number nine. "The Joint Zoning Council shall establish policy on matters of importance to the jointure. The members of the governing body of each of the participating municipalities shall be members of the Joint Zoning Council with the ability to attend and participate in all meetings of the Joint Zoning Council, provided that each municipality shall have no more than one vote only, regardless of the number of representatives attending the meeting. An effort should be made to meet a consensus in coming to the ultimate vote. The quorum for transaction of business by the Joint Zoning Council shall be at least one member of the governing body of each participating municipality."
Okay, I guess we'll just have to work it out if it comes to that, so...
Yeah, I guess, you know, one Newtown supervisor, one Wrightstown supervisor, and one Upper Makefield supervisor must at a minimum be there to take action. If all five Newtown supervisors attend, one Upper Makefield attends, and one Wrightstown attends, Newtown gets one vote, Upper Makefield gets one vote, and Wrightstown gets one vote.
We can't gang up on them?
That, I think, is what this is trying to prevent.
Bigger problem is that what if they all disagree for my township?
Ah, that's where, that's where you have to get your stuff together. That's, that's correct.
It would be incumbent to, you know, for us to come to some kind of agreement. I do recollect that much of the business is done by consensus, and most of the things that we vote on also get sent back to the, each, each board of supervisors for, for further actions, so...
Sure, sure.
Any other comments, questions? All good. Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of considering, you know, passing the jointure updates, the updates to the jointure agreement, including resolution, whatever that number was?
It was 2023-R-15.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final item on my report are the zoning hearing board hearings. The numbers one, three, and four listed on my, on the agenda tonight are being heard on the first, Thursday in October. The second one is, has received, it has requested and received the continuance to the first meeting in November. Question for the board after hearing Ms. Driscoll's report on those applications is whether the board wishes to take a position on them.
I'd like to make a motion to Senator Solicitor to uphold our zoning for the Harriet Beckett 473 Lower Doolington Road subdivision.
I guess I could second that.
Can I ask a reason?
Yeah, I think it's conservation management. They want to subdivide it and make smaller lots of, from 10 acres down to, some of them are pretty small, below conservation management lot sizes, and I don't think we should let that happen.
Okay.
It's higher density than it should be there.
What's that?
Just higher density than should be there by the zoning.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, seeing none. So, we have a motion on the floor to send the supervisor, send the solicitor to the hearing for Harriet Beckett. Got a motion and a second. Let's vote. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Any others?
Yes, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You hit the button first.
I did. Maybe it's the same thing. No, a second.
Speaking of upholding our ordinances, I would like to at least send a letter to uphold our signage ordinance at the Borscht Belt hearing in November, which happens, I think those hearings happen to fall on the same day as the JCC meeting, so...
Yeah.
I don't know which one is more important for me to attend, but I don't think the solicitor has to attend, so I would just make a motion to send a letter.
Can I interject before there's a second? I'd like to go further and send the solicitor to represent the township in this regards, and I'm assuming also the zoning officer would, would give testimony on this. I, I think it's an important enough action that we should send the solicitor and the zoning officer because of what, what has been done, the, the abuse that has been done by, by this, this Borscht Belt delicatessen in regards to breaking the zoning laws, so to speak.
We would be there to defend the ordinance.
Yeah, defend, yeah, defend the ordinance, and then also to, I, I think we owe it to stick up for our zoning officer in regards to, in this manner.
Yeah.
Okay, I would yield to that motion rather than my motion, so...
I have a second. Second. You can second it. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the... Any from the public? The motion is to send the solicitor to defend the ordinance for the Borscht Belt, Borscht Belt delicatessen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I believe you have some direction.
I certainly do. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I will, just to summarize, be attending both the October fifth and November second zoning hearing boards.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is seven million, five hundred and eighty thousand and forty-two dollars. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsyth to give the emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome back. It's been a...
Seems like it's been a long summer.
Been a long summer.
Okay. For the month of August, I would like to report we responded to one hundred and twenty-four calls of service. We completed one hundred and sixteen fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, one use and occupancy inspection, five plan reviews. And we completed fifteen fire safety inspections in Newtown Borough. Out of the one hundred and twenty-four calls, we responded to three dwelling fires, one gas leak, sixty-two EMS calls, thirty-five alarm systems, three rubbish fires, four traffic accidents, three building fires, one investigation, six fumes calls, three where we assisted the squad, one water flow alarm, one vehicle fire, and one wires call. Also, in the month of August, I'd like to report that we, four of us in the emergency services department have completed our certification at the professional level in emergency management, that being firefighter Martindale, firefighter Katz, firefighter Ratsky, and myself have completed to the professional level emergency management. And the last thing I'd like to report is last Wednesday, we received word from FEMA. They announced that we received the SAFER grant for one million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. So that will enable us to hire four new firefighters and provide service seven days a week from emergency services. So it took four years, but I'm extremely happy that we received this grant. And we'll finally get started in the right direction to get what I've been asking for, for four and a half years now. So we're finally moving in the right direction. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all of us for getting the SAFER grant because, of course, it benefits the firefighters, but the community, it benefits even more because a level of safety has been up. And it, it gives one a feeling of gratification to know that our fire services are going to be there for any emergency. So it's, it's awesome for all of us.
And I, I think it's, it goes a lot for you folks, for MICA. Last year, we took some big steps. We raised the millage to one mill to put some money into capital fund. Mr. Calabro made the motion to take money from the general fund and put it in the capital fund. And I think it showed with the, the agreement between the borough and the township that we were headed in the right direction and we were showing progress and we were taking the right step forward to complete our task. So thank you to the board and the administration. Couldn't have done it without you, so I appreciate it.
I just want to add my thanks. I mean, just being consistent and persistent in pursuing that, that grant over the years. Yeah, it has taken some time. We got a deputy fire chief.
Yeah.
I think that helped turn the tide. Maybe the agreement with the borough was, for fire services, I think, was important, an important step as well, so... It ju, it just takes persistence and, you know, staying after it.
Well, I was a little worried when I called MICA and told him we received the grant because I know he just finished the budget. And, you know, the federal government has the most opportune time to announce grants, so... MICA, I think, was happy, but he had to go back to work and start changing numbers again. So I just appreciate everything and the support that you folks have given us.
Yes.
Yeah. No, Chief, I just want to congratulate you on your persistence. And what's the saying? The fourth, fourth time is the charm?
Fourth time is the charm.
Even if it went to fifth, the fifth would be the charm, so... But talking about numbers, is there any, going to be any discussion about recalculating what the borough would be giving us? Because now it's going to up our ante. And I would assume percentage-wise, if, if, if the agreement was based on percentages, that they would have to be giving us additional money. Is that correct?
We're, we're in the process. I'm going to meet with them next Wednesday. There's a couple of different revenue sources that come in that. So our capital purchases next year will be quite high, and the borough is going to have to pay, I, I think it's ten point three percent of our capital purchases, and then the additional five to ten percent of their annual increase. So probably close to twenty-five thousand dollar increase next year I'm, I'm looking at, so...
But as Mrs. Snyder said, what price for safety? I, I think that's, that's the key thing. They're, they're getting, they're getting a big bang for their buck. We all are, the Newtown area residents with, I believe, twenty-four, twenty-four seven service now. And are we going to be one of the only townships? Well, besides like Ben Salem, which, which is a different, different entity.
We'll be, we'll have the career staff seven days a week, twelve hours a day. The volunteers will still cover the evening. We're trying to keep our duty crew system moving. With the lack of volunteers, it's getting tougher all the time. Northampton is the only ones that have completed the twenty-four seven operation by their career department. I, I, I wish I had a crystal ball how they're doing it. They're building two beautiful new buildings and they have twenty-four seven coverage. But, you know, these are all things that we have to work forward to, and I'm just happy that we're fifty percent of the way there, so...
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
About you guys. Thank you.
I have a question. Chief, how long do you anticipate the grant money lasting before we have to raise taxes to cover the new farm?
The grant is for three years. So it'll be twenty-four, twenty-five, and I think it expires March of twenty-seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, I have one more item under our report.
Sure.
It's the authorization to sell some used equipment. Our police chief and our public works director put together the memos that are included in the board packet. And that includes the sale of two police vehicles and some miscellaneous equipment, along with four public works vehicles that we no longer need or have been replaced, finally. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to sell used equipment.
Do we have that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Authorization to sell used equipment. Thank you, Mr. Davis. So a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Some of these are pretty old. Will they sell?
Oh, they'll sell. Yep, they'll sell.
Very good. See no comments or questions from the board or for the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the sale of vehicles from the administration, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have under our report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Secretary Treasurer, what do you have for us to see?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our September thirteenth, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting.
We have a second? Do we have it? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Questions about the minutes?
I just, I just have one. Maybe the manager can answer. In regards to, I guess it is page one, Curtin and Hefner, four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Can you explain what, what is going on? And what, where they at? Where are they at in the process?
Curtin and Hefner is for, is our labor attorney.
Okay.
And they're, they're in the talks with us as administration and the police union during the police contracts. They also handle, they also handle any personnel disputes.
Okay. But, but this here is just for labor, labor issues? Just labor matters?
Are you looking at the bills list or the minutes?
I'm looking at the bills list.
We're not going to get there yet.
Oh, we didn't, I thought we got to the bill. Okay. Well, I jumped in. Well, now you know what I'm going to ask you when we get to the bills list.
There we go.
All right.
So have we, have we actually approved the minutes?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're to the bills list.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Have a motion?
Have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second it. So we have any discussion about the bills? Now, we had the question about Curtin and Hefner.
Yeah, my, my only question in regard, I'm sorry, I jumped, jumped ahead.
No problem.
My only question was basically, can it be divulged as where they are in this, this process? Is it still a long way to go? That's all. Because I'm just anticipating if four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars is as of now, what, what's the final total going to be?
We're currently in negotiations with the PVA. And we do, we are working on future dates for, for additional meetings.
When would negotiations be expected to be completed?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay. So it won't carry on until next year?
No, but next year it will be fire.
Okay.
Okay. So we haven't approved the bills yet. So have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills according to the September twenty-seventh, 2023 bills list, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars even.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Give the second to Mr. Mack. Any discussion about the inter-fund, any discussion about the inter-fund transfers? Seeing none from the board? Any from the public? Call the question. All those in favor of approving the inter-fund transfers for September twenty-seventh, twenty, according to the bills list of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Brings us to our last round of public comment, our second round of public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment, please come forward. I'm seeing none. We'll move on. Thank you. Any old business? Any new business?
I do have an item for new business.
Okay.
Just got this information today, so I wanted to share with the board. There's a, a program called Victor Six Health and Fitness Program for veterans and active service members. And they're holding a Veterans Day, November eleventh ceremony. And we've been invited as the board to sponsor the event, no cost or anything, just to lend our support to it, and then attend. And it's Saturday, November eleventh, three o'clock. I wanted to see if, what the board felt about that, see if it's something that you guys want to get behind. The idea of this Victor Six there, a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and their, their goal is to cut down on veteran suicide. And one of the things to do this is, they say, a fit body equals a fit mind or contributes to a fit mind. And the program, it, it builds camaraderie between the veterans that are in the program. They have to meet twice a week to workout, exercise together, and build that fellowship as well as the, as the actual physical fitness part of it. So that's what that's about. And they're holding a service, or a ceremony, I should say, on November eleventh. So I want to see what you guys thought about lending our name to supporting that ceremony.
I'd certainly be interested. Is it something that we need to vote on? Is it something that we need to put on a, a future agenda to vote on? I mean, we do have a little time.
I, I would, is there, are there any funds?
There is no funds now.
No funds?
No, it's just lending our, our, basically this body. As supportive, yeah.
Why don't we?
Moral support, I guess.
If, if there's no funds and it's a matter that's come up this evening, I don't see any reason why you can't vote on it now. But when you say lending our name, where does it appear?
Well, they're just going, just at the event, they're going to say, you know, we're sponsoring the event, kind of thing.
We're sponsoring, but there's no funds.
But there's no funds. It's more like a, yeah.